Where the old Weber Bread Factory used to be. This portal has free computer access for job searching, also full-time staff to help you build resumes, practice interviews, and more.
A one-stop shop where folks can get help for housing, healthcare, childcare, and employment. See, the old days where we used to say, "I'm sorry, if you have five problems, here's five addresses." We hope those are over.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and company explain the difference between traditional work source centers and work source portals like this one. Portals have more resources for job seekers and are placed in areas where unemployment is the worst.
The ninth district, I have to acknowledge, has the highest rate of poverty and unemployment in our city. That's why this resource here is so important.
Portals also partner with nonprofits like HOPICs to help provide second chances for the formerly incarcerated. They also focus on career training in high-demand industries.
Today, we focus on information technology, hospitality and tourism, healthcare, construction utilities, and green energy, financial services.
To help you find not just a job, but a career. In southeast LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city's other work source portal is located on South Vermont Avenue in south LA. Mayor Garcetti says the city is investing nearly $2.5 million in new job training programs benefiting the homeless, foster youth, and transgenders. While LAX is jumping into the 21st century with a multi-billion-dollar overhaul that could change transportation and air travel as we know it in LA. Hundreds came out to hear about the landside access modernization plan from city leaders and to find out how they can take part. Anna Marcos takes us there.
The plan is to turn LAX into a jewel of global first-class travel. City leaders unveiled the $8.5 billion landside access modernization program to a full house.
Our goal is to fix the traffic gridlock coming in and out of the airport, to connect to public transportation, and to do it in a sustainable and responsible way.
I imagine at some point, everybody in this crowd has gone through Los Angeles International Airport and bemoaned its condition and has wondered why we can't do better.
Well, city leaders and airport commissioners are now doing better. Among the highlights of the plan, a consolidated center for all rental cars, two intermodal transportation facilities, an automated people mover that will move passengers through the entire airport and to and from the transportation facilities, and finally, a metro rail connection to the airport.
This project is not only important, but it will be transformative not just for the airport, not just for people who use the airport, but for the city of Los Angeles.
The design and bidding process will be different from the status quo as well. 900 people came to hear the announcement: executives, contractors, suppliers, and vendors, all looking for a piece of the pie when this mega-construction project starts. And city leaders asked them to come up with their own ideas and, if picked, to design, create, finance, and maintain the projects instead of them bidding on a project the city came up with.
We want Los Angeles to be known as a hotbed of innovation. All we ask of you is to be bold, is to think outside the proverbial box. Bring us something better, bring us something faster, bring us something more inventive, something more environmentally sensitive.
The first phase of the project, the people mover and the consolidated car rental center, is expected to be ready by 2023. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information, visit connectinglax.com. While Los Angeles may have seen some recent rain, the water shortage is still on the city's priority list. Rasha Goel has more on the latest technology tool that officials hope will help with water consumption.
This gadget, called a smart water meter, is the latest tool that officials say will help monitor water consumption throughout the city.
The idea behind these smart meters is simple. By monitoring water use in real time, we will be able to help our parks cut water consumption over time.
It gives us eyes on the park's water consumption 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That way, we can watch when there's a water, when there's a break, and they happen all the time. When there's a leak, we can immediately detect it and fix it and save millions of gallons of water.
The pilot program will bring 100 of these smart water meters to Echo Park and 27 other parks throughout the city.
The way they work is once they're attached, these smart meters use cell towers or cell network to transmit data to a website where both the Department of Water and Power and Rec and Parks can monitor water usage.
We really have to look at our water supplies and really what we need to do to be sustainable as a city.
The launch of the pilot program comes as the city considers a citywide water rate increase proposed by the LADWP. The increase will help Los Angeles invest in critically needed water infrastructure, develop more local water supplies, and expand water conservation efforts. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Recreation and Parks Department reported a 26% reduction in water use last year, which is enough water to serve 8,000 LA households for a year. While LA's working poor are about to get a boost when it comes to affordable housing as city leaders break ground on the Meridian Apartment Project. Anna Marcos takes us to the groundbreaking.
There is 100 reasons to cheer as city leaders break ground on the future Meridian Apartments, a complex of 100 affordable units for low-income residents. The studio, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments will come with a computer lab, courtrooms, parking, and many social services.
With the homeless count increasing every day, and I think if you just go around the corner, you'll see all the tents that are there, that really affordable housing is something that is so critical.
So what would rents go for here? Well, as an example, a two-bedroom apartment could go for as low as $560 a month for those with the lowest qualifying income, about $17,000 a year, while a studio apartment could go for as low as $435.
It's a working community, it's really workforce housing that we're providing here.
The housing project will be earth-friendly too, with a LEED Gold rating, and it will be near the Vermont-Beverly Metro Red Line Station, bringing another transit-centered community to LA. Still, with the need for affordable units rising, this is just a drop in the bucket.
Everyone assembled under this tent knew years ago that we had a housing crunch then, and we had a lack of affordable housing then. Now we're in crisis mode.
We're producing 100 units here, which is fantastic. The regional housing needs assessment indicated over an eight-year period, we needed to produce approximately 33,000 units citywide.
Organizers will start taking applications for the apartments in about a year. The project could be completed as early as September of 2017. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Residents, by the way, will also get a free one-year metro transit pass. While paid parental leave for city employees may soon become a reality, Olympic athletes hit the streets of LA and a busy Hollywood crosswalk gets lit up. All these stories in City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council voted to explore the idea of offering city workers who are new parents four weeks of paid time off to allow them to bond with their children. Councilmember Paul Krikorian said that in order to be competitive with the private sector, the city needs to make sure it provides this benefit to allow young families to be able to come to work and still know they won't be neglecting their obligations to their children. Officials will analyze the economic and other implications this benefit will have on the city. City employees currently have four months of unpaid leave to bond with their children. In order to get paid during that time, some employees use a mixture of accrued paid vacation and sick leave hours, according to city officials. Los Angeles recently hosted the women's and men's 2016 U.S. Olympic Team Marathon Trials. Three men and three women were selected as the first batch of track-and-field athletes to qualify for the 2016 U.S. Olympic Team that will compete this summer in Brazil. Meanwhile, officials hope the trials will demonstrate that Los Angeles has what it takes to host the 2024 Olympics.
We have the strongest package, I think, in the world, not only for a city that has followed the sun and continues to chase the dreams and innovation that defined who we are, but a town that probably is home to more Olympic athletes than any place on the face of the earth.
Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, David Rue, and the Los Angeles Department of Transportation dedicated a newly-installed traffic signal along Hollywood Boulevard and Lyman Place, which intersects Council Districts 4 and 13.
Because, you know, pedestrian safety, public safety, doesn't know boundaries.
The flashing yellow light will serve as an enhancement to the crosswalk already in place. The installation was part of the $6 million that the Los Angeles City Council allocated for traffic signal improvement projects in fiscal year 2014 and '15. The heavily-used pedestrian crossing is the only one on the entire stretch of Hollywood from Hillhurst to Vermont. And even though it will help provide a safer crossing for those who visit and work in the commercial corridor, O'Farrell says pedestrians still need to be careful even when the lights are flashing.
We still have to watch out because there are distracted drivers now more than ever. Just because they have a flashing light doesn't mean they're even going to see it. So I want to make sure that no one has a false sense of security, that cars won't still drive recklessly.
A community outreach program blends basketball skills with an empowering message for young students. Rasha Goel has more.
That was the message these young students from Para los Ninos Charter Elementary School received from some of the Harlem Globetrotters. First Puerto Rican Harlem Globetrotter, El Gato Melendez; Bucket Blake, who holds a Guinness World Record for most basketball underhand half-court shots in one minute; and expert dunker Hacksaw Hall came out to teach kids about the ABCs of bullying prevention.
The A in the ABCs of bullying prevention stands for action. Everybody say "action!"
Bucket Blake, who was bullied himself as a kid, shared some tips on how he was able to beat the bullies at their own game.
I kept smiling. The bullies were calling me names and telling jokes about me. Actually, some of the jokes were funny, so I started laughing at myself, and they didn't like the fact that they couldn't make me sad. But when they started to walk up on me, I'd walk away and lead them right to the nearest teacher.
This presentation was part of the Globetrotters' 90th anniversary.
Reaching to the kids is our main goal, to talk about ABCs of bullying prevention, bring out the good, possibly a message for them to use, not just in school, but also outside of school, in the community, and also at home.
Officials tell me they have a very familial atmosphere here, and the parents are very well-connected with the staff and students. And when it comes to bullying prevention, well, they try to troubleshoot the problem before it even starts.
I think oftentimes it's more about educating the parents about what bullying is. I think oftentimes we see more the word being misused, so really about educating the parents, educating the children, and what they can do to prevent bullying.
And for today, the Globetrotters hope that with their unique spin, stopping bullying for these kids will be a slam dunk. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Harlem Globetrotters continue their tour through the summer with shows in Europe and Canada. While the traffic's so bad, you want to get out of your car and walk sometimes, and West Side residents have had enough. As Gil Reyes reports, they're offering suggestions to end the gridlock on Sunset Boulevard in Brentwood.
It's not as bad on weekends, but on weekdays, get ready to scream. Traffic on Sunset Boulevard near the 405 freeway in Brentwood.
It's a soul-sucking experience for folks who live here. It can take folks over an hour to go a mile, and what we're looking for is a bunch of small solutions that together can add up to some relief.
West Side Councilman Mike Bonin hosted this community gathering that drew some 200 Brentwood-area residents. Among their tips to alleviate congestion, changing the timing on traffic signals, limiting turns, and activating tolls during peak hours. This is for a stretch of sunset between Kentor Avenue and the 405. And here's one more suggestion: adding more housing on the west side.
As long as people work on the west side and don't live on the west side because there's not enough housing for the workers, I think you've got a traffic problem. There's just, we see in Brentwood, people drive through in the morning to get through to Santa Monica, and because that's where a lot of the office space has been built, and they drive out at night.
Area homeowners also say planned construction at nearby Archer School for Girls next year will only worsen things.
I grew up in LA, born and raised in LA. We love our cars, but we gotta, it's gotten to a point where we can't all fit in the same limited space to get our cars through at the same time, so we need to find alternatives. So it's biking opportunity, taking a bike down to the new train station and getting someplace, or taking a bus.
Councilman Bonin says his office is putting together a progress report based on every suggestion, and will report back to residents soon on possible implementation. For LA This Week, I'm Gil Reyes.
That stretch of sunset winds through UCLA, the Getty Center, and other upscale neighborhoods. While Boyle Heights is becoming more pedestrian-friendly thanks to a series of new traffic safety upgrades, Anita Bennett has the story.
These Boyle Heights residents have a reason to cheer: a newly-installed traffic light at the corner of Fourth and Pecan.
This is a project that came about because of some students who asked for more safety crossing the street here. Came about because of a study and some advocacy from neighborhood organizations.
The traffic light is part of a series of upgrades to improve safety during the Sixth Street Bridge construction project.
This is part of 11 improvements that are being invested as a front end of the Sixth Street Viaduct, so two new signals, 11 new left-turn improvements.
Residents say cars often speed through the area as they enter the 101 freeway, but the new traffic light is meant to get drivers to slow down and yield to pedestrians. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
The improvements are being funded through state grants. Well, check out the latest trends in boating as the LA Boat Show sails into LA, get fired up for some hockey action on the ice, and commemorating the 50th anniversary of the Watts Rebellion. That's all in this week's Things to Do. Celebrating 60 years as the best place to see and buy boats, the LA Boat Show is coming to the Los Angeles Convention Center. This event features hands-on training workshops, marine electronics and electronics pavilion, an interactive learning center, a new float-in theater, boating skills, virtual trainer, and a kid's zone. Whether you're an expert boater or just curious, the LA Boat Show has something for everyone. The LA Convention Center Boat Show opens February 25 and runs through the 28th, on Saturday from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m., and on Sunday from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. For more information, visit losangelisboatshow.com. The Los Angeles Kings are back on the ice for the 2016 NHL season, attempting to keep the every-other-year championship pattern going. After losing 2-1 to the Buffalo Sabres last year, they're yearning for another go. Check out this fast-paced action on the ice, root for your favorite players, and get fired up for another season of hard-hitting hockey. The LA Kings will face off the Buffalo Sabres at the Los Angeles Staples Center on February 27th. For more information, visit kings.nhl.com.
Los Angeles, California, the district called Watts. Thirty-four persons die, $40 million worth of property is destroyed, almost 4,000 are arrested.
The Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs Watts Towers Art Center Campus, together with the Clayton Library and Museum, is delighted to present 50 years and I still can't breathe remembering the 50th anniversary of the 1965 Watts Rebellion and now. On view at the Watts Towers Art Center Campus in the NOAA Purefoy Gallery through February 28th. This one-of-a-kind exhibit presents one of the most compelling collections of socially-conscious art in California in many years. Curated by Watts Towers Art Center Campus Director Rosie Lee Hooks and artist Michael Massenberg, the show addresses highly topical themes of legal and police injustice against minority communities from the Watts Rebellion to the present. The gallery is open Wednesday through Saturday from 10 to 4 p.m. and Sunday from 12 to 4. For more information, visit wattstowers.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
It all started that one day. I knew then, my destiny. To have a career where I can achieve my best. Where every day is different. Where lifelong friendships are made. Where I'm saving lives. And inspiring others. My name is Mackenzie Vandergeest and I am a Los Angeles firefighter.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayangar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles. And you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Namaste.
Yeah. 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 Good morning, good morning. Today is Friday, February 26. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Please take a seat. Please take a seat so that we can begin our work for today. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloominfield, Bonnabuske, Nocedu, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carras, Correa, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Weston, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves and Mr. Bonnens seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Martinez moves and Mr. Weezer seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1E, I, K, M, R, and AH be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full, that items 1F and 1Z be reduced to $1,387.29 and $1,634.20 respectively, and that items 1U and 1AD be continued to March 18.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing. We do have cards, sir.
Okay, continue.
That brings us to items 2 through 7. They're items which public hearings have been held.
Members specials? I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
All right, let's, uh...
And Mr. President, item 2 will go over, uh, one week for a second, excuse me, um, will go over to March 15 for a second read unless reconsidered later with 12 members. That brings us to items 8 through 11. They're items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body? Do we, we have cards?
Yes, sir, on 8, 9, and 10.
All right, that brings us where? Let's vote on 11 then, members specials? Let's, on item 11, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Why don't I ask Mr. Englander if you'd join me at the center aisle? And we'll get Ms. Martinez to... Howdy, come on, let's get started. Good morning, good morning. Yeah, please. Let's make this an attractive photo here. Madam President and members, today is a special day. Today, we recognize, acknowledge, celebrate the good works, and say so long to one of the best that, and the brightest that we've had for this, at the city of Los Angeles and Jim Featherstone. Let's give Jim a round of applause. He's standing right behind me. General manager of our emergency management department. He will be retiring in a few days, and I look at you and I hate you because you look younger than me and you're retiring. But you know, Jim is a native of Washington DC, came to Los Angeles, got a job with the fire department in the mid-1980s, worked his way up through the ranks, became a supervisor at one point in time, was even a labor negotiator, then was asked to step in and pinch hit as we reorganized the Department of Emergency Management. Within a year, he was asked to stay on as the general manager, and for those of us that have been here a while, we have not seen that department in the shape that it's been in since, uh, since, uh, big Jim has come in and reorganized that department. Let's give him another round of applause to James Featherstone. And so then, a funny thing happened. I mean, we had like our fourth vacancy in a row where we were looking for a fire chief. So what did our new mayor do? He asked, uh, Mr. Featherstone if he would step in, hold the fort, and, uh, kind of reorganize some things. He did that. He did that with honor, and then we were fortunate enough to get him to return back to his normal post, and then all of a sudden, I hear he's gonna say so long. When you're a kid, all of us remember, there was always one kid on the block that you would always try to pick to be on your team. There was always one kid that was good at just about everything that he and she did, and I submit to you that that is James Featherstone. One of the best utility people in the business. We are gonna miss him, the city of Los Angeles, because you could put him in just about any position and he would perform at an extremely high level. So Jim, I want to just say personally, it was an honor to work with you and to get to know you. I wish you and your wife success. I cannot believe that you are really retiring, retiring, so, uh, I, you know, when you get ready to leave, I want you to whisper in my ear and tell me exactly what the heck you're gonna be doing, but you will be missed. You know, thank you for the service that you've given to this great city. At this time, I'd like to ask another individual who has worked extremely closely with you to come up and say a few words, and that's President Pro Tim of the Council, Mitch Englander.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it's bittersweet to, uh, to think that Jim's leaving and going on to Bermuda shorts and margaritas, beachfront properties, traveling the world, but well earned. You think about the most important function that we have here in the city of Los Angeles, and that's to keep people safe. Period. Then you think about keeping them safe in the worst disasters that you can fathom, in the worst emergencies during the lowest times in people's lives, and then you gotta think that we have to put somebody in charge before all of us to represent us and think about those contingency plans, the operation plans, preparing over 4 million people and all the businesses and all the visitors here for emergency preparedness, and then to think about the fact that we are by far, bar none, the safest large city and the best prepared in the country, and then you think about who's responsible for that? Jim Featherstone has earned us that mark. And you think, with all the things that we go through, and in fact, my district, as many of you know, has been labeled the epicenter of disaster. I'm not sure that that's a good thing.
I'm not gonna say anything.
But we certainly see our fair share of disasters. Our annual fire season, you buy a home in CD12, it comes with marshmallows. We've had the Chatsworth train accident, which was the worst horrific train accident that we've ever seen, killing 25 people, injuring over 175 people, and preparing for that, and then the aftermath. The hardest part of an emergency is actually the recovery. Right now, we're dealing certainly with the Aliso Canyon gas leak, and Jim set up a center in our district to bring all those families, not just home, but home safely. If you think about all the things we go through in planning, not just for emergencies, not just for perhaps the inevitable terrorist attack, but just all the good times too, from the Lakers parades and the Kings, all the things we have to anticipate for. Who's at the cornerstone of all that but Featherstone? He is the cornerstone and has been, irreplaceable, bar none. He has set the bar high, and we are safe because of it. The programs that he's instituted, working with us on the okay help sign, that we know all of our neighbors are gonna now have to be the first responders because we don't have enough to go around in the city in the event of the next major earthquake, and that's going to happen. He helps us prepare for that. And bringing neighborhood councils and community-based organizations and faith-based organizations together and thinking proactively how to reach out to them, get them cert certified, working with the fire department, it's been Jim doing all that work, working with us. This is a big, big loss to all of us, make no mistake. He has really set the bar high, but he's put programs in place that will outlive him and all of us, and for that, I'm very grateful. Jim, congratulations to you and your wife. You've earned it. You've made us a better city and a better people and safer because of all of your work and your dedication, your devotion to the people of Los Angeles, and we say, congratulations. God bless you.
Thank you. So, on behalf of all of us... Now, I wanna be next to you.
Yes, yes.
Be next to Mitch.
Uh, Mr. President, this frame's taller than we are. On behalf of all of us, we all signed this personally. I want to say thank you, congratulations, and you deserve it. We're all forever in your gratitude. Thank you so much.
Let's get a photo right here.
Mr. Englander, Mr. Wesson, we have a few members on the queue.
Yeah, let's put it down here, otherwise, we're gonna be cropped out of the thing.
Mr. Ofero would like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise and add my appreciation, words of appreciation for all that you have done and do every day, James, for two years, seven months, and 26 days, as long as I've been in office. You have always been the consummate professional, from the time you were interim fire chief, and I had a real hard time not calling you Firestone, but now I've gotten used to Featherstone and, and to your time as general manager in the emergency preparedness department. You really do set the example in professionalism and selflessness and going above and beyond, and I think that's your legacy, and I agree with Mr. Wesson, you seem way, way too young to be retiring. So I look forward to supporting you in whatever your next endeavors may be, and a big thank you from the 13th District.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bloominfield?
Thank you. I want to add my voice to the voice and that everyone has expressed a gratitude for you and your, your, your sort of steely professionalism when it comes to all of this, which is also why I got such a kick out of when we discovered that my father-in-law was your teacher back in Washington, and he would describe a very different Jim Featherstone with big hair and a rabble-rouser, and, and we had some good laughs, you and me, when talking about, about, about those days and these days, and you have just been so good to work with and so responsive. I mean, in my district out in the West Valley, working with my V-Prep task force to be more prepared, not only doing the big job for the city, but when you saw that there was interest by the, by a local community in my area and trying to push the level of preparedness, you jumped right in and you empowered folks in my district to make a difference. So I really am grateful to all that you have done and the professionalism in which you've done it, and it's a, it's a big loss for the city for, for you to be retiring, but I wish you nothing but the best and all good things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim, I have mixed feelings. I'm so happy for you, your wife, and your family, that now you get to spend time on your own and, and do all the things that you want to do, but it's a tremendous loss for the city of Los Angeles. And as far as the emergency management department's involved, you're the only one I knew. You're the first person I met, you know, when I got here, and you've just been nothing but helpful, nothing but professional, nothing but always there in, in light of potential crises and crises that have happened across the city, and I just really thank you for everything that you do, but knowing you, I'm sure you can't stay away too long, so I'm sure we'll find something for you to do, but thank you so much, and thank you for all your service to the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Bonnens?
Thank you, Madam President. Jim, congratulations. I'm happy for you. You actually do look a little bit younger than you did just a couple weeks ago. I've known you for a lot of years. I've known you when I was a staffer, I've known you as an elected official, I've known you wearing various different hats, but I have one particular memory that stands out, and that's November 1st, 2013, when we had the terrorist incident and the fatal shooting at Los Angeles International Airport. It was your first day, as I understand it, as I remember it anyway, as fire chief, as interim fire chief. What a hell of a first day it was. And I remember you that day at the airport, at the command center. There were a lot of folks, there were a lot of agencies, there was a lot of concern, there was a lot of confusion. You were calm, you were steely, you were steady, and you helped make sure that the city's response that day was smart and coordinated, coordinated, and you made sure that, that cool heads prevailed all day. You were a credit to you and to the fire department and to the city of Los Angeles, and I just want to thank you so much for that day and for every other day that you've worked for the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Carras?
Thank you, Madam President, and a lot of what I would say has been said by everyone else. You've done an amazing job and you've been great to work with. Personally, I want to thank you for something that now is minor, but wasn't originally, which is getting the city well-prepared for El Nino. Now, of course, we thought it was going to be Godzilla, El Nino, so far, it's been pussycat, El Nino, but we couldn't take any chances. It still may hit us hard in March, and you've done an amazing job in preparing us and the city for that, along with everything else you've done, so I just wanted to add my voice to those thanking you for your incredible service and the wonderful job that you've done, and I wish you a great retirement.
Madam President, Mr. President, council member, the distinguished members of this body, I'm always humbled when I come before this group because this group represents the people of the city of Los Angeles, who myself and my family have committed our lives to supporting and making safer for the last three decades. First, I'd like to, in front of this body, thank my wife, Sean, who, without her, none of this would ever have been possible for me. She is one of my strongest compass points, and she makes it so that every day for the last 30 years has been a labor of love for me. I have enjoyed coming to work this morning, no less than I enjoyed the first day on duty in 1986 as a young recruit firefighter, so it's been my honor, my privilege, and my pleasure to serve the city of Los Angeles in a public safety capacity. Unfortunately, I don't know how to do anything else in terms of occupations, I'm a one-trick pony, and I thank you for providing me the opportunity. A young kid from southeast Washington DC, never have any aspirations or any thoughts of being able to stand before a body such as this and in a city as great as this, and to have had the last 30 years the opportunity to literally enjoy coming to work every day, and so that's a testament to government, that's a testament to the city of Los Angeles, and thank you for the, the very kind words, but I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you all, very, very much appreciated.
Hold on for just a second, Mr. Price? Mr. Featherstone, hold on for just a second, Mr. Price would like to also say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too just want to say, Jim, thank you for your service. You know, I've only known you for a short period of time, two and a half years here, but you've always been very positive, very encouraging. You've been a real positive role model for all of us, and so we just appreciate your service, appreciate your commitment to the community, your professionalism, and your willingness to give back through your professional and other activities. And so we're just sorry to see you go, but we know that your hand and your handprints are still all over our community, and we appreciate it, and we appreciate you. Congratulations, you and your wife.
And Mr. Featherstone, I just want to thank you for my first helicopter ride. We survived. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. As we continue up until the very last day, our celebration of African-American History Month, I am proud to bring to our body this morning a celebration of city family members who are alumni of historically black colleges and universities. There are over 107 historically black colleges and universities throughout the nation. They are both private and public. The first historically black college or university to hand out degrees was the one and only Lincoln University. And it wasn't quite that year, but a little bit later, they gave a degree to our own president of the city council, Herb Wesson. We have a sweatshirt for him because we wanted him to fit in today. So we're going to ask him to come down and join us and receive his sweatshirt from Lincoln University. Let's give him, all give him a big round of applause. There are, again, there are so many schools, the historically black college movement started, as you know, before apartheid in the United States was defeated. African-Americans weren't allowed to go to the regular colleges and universities, and so the community said, we'll build our own. And we built our own, and we built them all over the country. And even after apartheid fell and we had integration, those institutions remain important institutions, and they're important to our city. Behind me, I think we had over 60 RSVPs for today, and there are folks from police and fire and engineering and ITA and the city attorney's office and general services, and almost every department in our city is staffed in one way or another by an alumni of historically black colleges or universities. So let's give them a big round of applause. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do something very, very dangerous here. We asked everybody to wear their sweatshirts and their jackets to celebrate, and so we're going to try to do a little bit of a roll call. I'm probably going to get in trouble for this, but we're going to try it anyway. So let's see here, we've got Arkansas in Plaim Bluff, we've got Clark Atlanta, I've got my own staff member, Bernard Dory, he's a graduate of Clark Atlanta, Atlanta University. We've got Fisk, Grambling State, Florida A&amp;M. We've got a big contingency from Hampton University in Virginia, a big contingency from Howard University and Howard Law School. My own staff member Chanel Brown is a graduate of Howard. We have Langston in Lincoln, we have Morris Brown, North Carolina Central University, Prairie View A&amp;M, Shaw, Southern Tennessee State, Tuskegee, Xavier, Bennet College, Central State College, and we have Spelman College in Atlanta. And we have, we have, last but not least, in Atlanta, Georgia, the alma mater of Dr. Martin Luther King, Spike Lee, Atlanta Mayor, Mayor Jackson, and your own 8th District Council Member, Marquise Harris-Dawson, and our Assembly Member, Sebastian Ridley-Thomas, the one and only Morehouse College. So I want to, I want to thank everybody for coming out this morning. It's a very important time in the movement for historically black colleges and universities, especially the public ones, because a lot of states are saying, well, since we have integration now, we don't have to fund you, we can cut you and, you know, make you go into the pool with everybody else. And the reason that's the wrong thing to do at this moment, today in 2015, more than half of African-American doctors are undergraduates of historically black colleges and universities, more than half of black engineers, more than half of African-American attorneys are graduates of historically black colleges and universities. So this movement is still very important to the country, very important to the community, and very important to the city of Los Angeles. So thank you all for joining me in this celebration, and thank all of you for what you have done for the city and what you will do in the years to come.
Just quick, just quickly, I will say, I know I have another, I was at breakfast a few weeks ago with my wife, minding my business, and Marie Callender's, and all of a sudden this, I saw this tall dude, he kept staring at me and staring at me all through, all through breakfast. And I said, I said, oh, God, maybe he needs a tree trimmed or something. But from Wrecking Parks, I want my fellow Lincoln University. That's right. And I just want to say, say this, that to Mr. Harris-Dawson, that I think this is very fitting, that we are celebrating a Black History Month, that you bring in institutions that have produced some of the best minds that this country has ever known. I want to say where it relates to Lincoln University, my alma mater, that it changed my life. I would not be here if the professors did not take the time to force me, to force me. Because, trust me, I didn't, I did not go to college to learn, okay? But they forced me and changed my life. And then I heard a big scream where it related to Hampton, Hampton's in the house. Almost every other member of my family on my mother's side went to Hampton, so I got to give Hampton a shout out as well. But to all of you, thank you for all of the work that you provide for the city of Los Angeles. It's a great day, we should all be proud, and we, yes, we should all show off our colors. God bless you all.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I just want to thank Councilman, Councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson for his outstanding leadership on our council and in bringing these outstanding professionals to us today. Unfortunately, I didn't go to a historically black college, I went to Stanford, historically white college. But, but, but two key members of my staff are proud graduates. Herb, Herb Weston III went to Morris Brown, and, and James Westbrook, my deputy, field deputy, district director, I should say, went to Howard. And so, strong, a strong and long legacy supporting historically black colleges. Appreciate the unique role that those colleges play and the unique role that you're playing as professionals, as community activists, as individuals concerned, not just about your own welfare, but reaching back as well. So congratulations, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. So we'll retire, I think we'll go the back way to the room to get some photos. Yeah, we're gonna, we'll go there. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take just a minute, if I could, to introduce board members of the Westwood Neighborhood Council that are here visiting and taking a tour of City Hall.
Can you have them stand, Mr. Corretts? Who are they, your friends in the back? Wave.
Yeah, if they could stand up and be recognized, President Jerry Brown, Sandy Brown, Rose Bae, Farah Hanipour, Scott Whittle, Marcelo Robinson, Angus Beverly, Connie Bukitis, and Laura Winnicow, all members of the Westwood Neighborhood Council. So let's give them a hand.
Welcome to your City Hall. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Price, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Before we begin, let me just give a shout out to the students from Santee are in the house. Santee High School?
Santee High School, are you here?
Don't be bashful.
Welcome.
Madam President, members, let me direct your attention to the screen. There's going to be a brief video before our presentation on the Youth Orchestra of Los Angeles.
So we're currently preparing for the Super Bowl, which is really cool.
Finding we were playing at the Super Bowl was amazing. I watch it every year, I watch football, I love football, and getting to play on that stage like all the other artists is amazing.
Knowing that so many people are coming together, people that we don't know, the people that are going to be in the recording studio, and obviously Coldplay, and Davi Day, who works so hard to arrange the music, it's amazing because there's so many people working together to make this possible.
The day Chris Martin showed up at rehearsal was a normal day until, obviously, until he showed up.
The room just felt like, it just felt like this freeze of air, and everybody's just like...
I think you guys are going to do the Super Bowl with us, right? Well, thank you so much, you sound brilliant.
I started hearing them sing. So then I like got excited, so then I started playing more, like excitedly and expressing my emotions through my instrument.
And it feels really good to be performing with people and like artists, amazing artists who believe in the same things that we do.
Like a team, like a team spirit, you know? Just what your orchestra is, it's all of you combining to make something bigger than yourself.
He told us it's all a big family, we're going to have fun, jump around, play with each other, everybody's going to go crazy, it's going to be a good time.
Playing music is like really fun and stuff, but when you do it with passion, it's on a completely different level.
Forget about the football game, this is what people really...
I'm excited to play with people I care about, that I love, actually.
Don't know music, they're just going to be like, whoa, those kids are actually really cool. They're playing classical music and they're playing on stage with Coldplay like us.
Yeah.
Madam President, members, I'm proud to recognize Youth Orchestra of LA, Yola, with us today. They are an important project in Expo Park, Expo Center located in Exhibition Park. And their partnership with the LA Philharmonic has really generated some excitement and some real notoriety. Of course, you may have seen Yola at the Super Bowl, they performed along with Beyonce, Coldplay, and others. Just underscoring the fact that music is a critical learning tool that improves cognitive development, math, reading, helps foster teamwork. And so it's an important program of the, of the park, and an exciting program for young people to be involved in. Joining me today, in honor of these talented young people, is the executive director of Expo, Ms. Belinda Jackson. And we're going to ask her to say a few words and also introduce our collaborative partners. Belinda?
Good morning and thank you so much, Councilman Price. Thank you all for this honor this morning. I know all of you saw the Super Bowl halftime show, because I know I was looking at it. And it was just awesome. I still can't believe it that our kids from South LA were on the screen there with Coldplay and Beyonce, it was just a time to remember. I know that this is something they will never, ever forget. I know I, I will never forget it. I'm especially honored that Expo Center, it's important to note, that Expo Center was the first Yola project. We started in 2007 with just 40 kids from South Los Angeles that had no music lessons at all. And now, today, we are at capacity with 300 kids. That's really some success. Thank you, thank you. I would like to thank all of my partners that are here with me today because it's, it's very important to note that this was, this is a very, very successful partnership between the Los Angeles Philharmonic, the Friends of Expo Center, the Harmony Project continues to be such a wonderful, successful program. Let me first introduce our partners from the Harmony Project. We have Lenny Borstens, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have Cynthia Rodriguez, she's representing the Harmony Project. And the Harmony Project, one of the things that they do, they recruit all the teaching artists, they provide onsite coordinator with, Cynthia is the onsite coordinator, they manage all the music lessons, and they provide a host of supportive services for the families. And next, I'd like to introduce the Phil. We have Lenny Borstens, we have Gretchen Nielsen, and we also have Rebecca Segal. And one of the things that they do a lot, first of all, they design the program, they provide financial support, which covers all the instruments, the conductor, a program manager. The Phil also creates wonderful opportunities for our youth to perform at a variety of venues like the Super Bowl, the Hollywood Bowl, just to name a few. Next, of course, we have the Friends of Expo Center, we're represented today. Julia, if you want to raise your hand, Julia? Julia, if you're, and we also have Steven Smith Contrera, Contrera, excuse me. And the Friends, first of all, the Friends of Expo are our nonprofit partner. They have raised millions of dollars over the years, but for this particular program, the Friends provide financial support for a wonderful after-school enrichment program, program manager, and opportunities for us, summer paid internship. Now for Expo Center. Expo Center provides a program space for 300 participants. My staff also coordinates all the facility management required for all the music lessons, rehearsals, and special sessions. In addition, we have a host of, full range of programs for the participants and their families. I also would like to introduce my staff person, Randy Kelly, the big guy right here. I do want to thank my staff as well, because this is a very, very innovative program. I want to thank them for embracing such a program, because this is not a program that is a core program in our department, but it's a wonderful program for our community. Thank you again, Councilman Price. I also want to thank the council for your time, and thank you for all the great work that you do every day for the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of a grateful community, I'd like to present this certificate to the Expo Center Youth Orchestra of Los Angeles, on behalf of the city council, for your outstanding achievements and for your extraordinary participation in the 2016 NFL Super Bowl. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Price. Congratulations.
Thank you. Madam President, members, as we conclude our celebration of African-American Heritage Month, I'm excited to recognize five... Month, I'm excited to recognize five jazz and blues legends who've made contributions, many contributions, to the legacy of music internationally and right here in Los Angeles. More specifically, these legends have a real connection to Central Avenue, located in the Ninth District. In partnership with Ms. Linda Morgan of the Living Legend Foundation, Linda? And Living Legends, why don't you join us? Come on, come on down. Our first honoree is John B. Williams. John was born in the Bronx, New York. His music was influenced by Latin, Caribbean, rhythm and blues arts of form. In 1969, adding classical music and electric sounds to his bass rhythm, John was recommended to be the musical director of The Tonight Show, starring Johnny Carson, where he grooved with the band for seven years, four years in New York and three here in L.A. Over the years, John's added dramatic, socially-conscious poetry and monologues to his music, giving birth to jazz theater, which continues to combine the two art forms, spoken word and jazz. John B. Williams, he's a real jazz legend. Sweet Baby is an award-winning vocalist, recording artist, a composer, a director, a writer, an educator, and artistic director of the Palm Springs Women's Jazz Festival. Although known for her energetic jazz, stage presence, and powerful vocals, some critics describe her as a jazz singer, others as a blues singer, but all agree that she is a versatile songwriter and a storyteller. J has been featured at festivals and concert halls throughout the world, she has produced numerous major events throughout the country, and also serves as Creative Managing Director for the Educational Theater Institute, providing enrichment programs for Los Angeles youth. She is a real jazz legend. Bubba was born in Harlem, New York, where his mom introduced him to gospel, blues, and rhythm and blues. Bubba is well-known and well-liked as an award-winning radio and TV personality, and a seasoned concert promoter. His festival experience includes the Prince Hall Schreiner's Concert in L.A., the New York, the New Orleans and St. Louis Jazz Festivals, the Doheny Blues Festival, and the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, just to name a few. The L.A. Times Calendar quoted, was quoted as saying that "He is one of the, one of the best things about the drive time in L.A." is Bubba Jackson on KLON, F-88.1. Bubba is a real jazz legend. Elena, an astonishing jazz vocalist with a rare depth of natural talent. Her level of performance is widely applauded as being similar to jazz greats Sarah Vaughan, Ella Fitzgerald, Diana Washington, and the like. Her extraordinary sound is indeed a treat for anyone who appreciates a true songstress. Elena, using vocal performance to foster empowerment with at-risk youth, awarded, was awarded the 2015 Kenneth A. Pearson Foundation Artist Outreach Project Grant. She continues to work encouraging young adults and youth to build personal strength through the performance of jazz and other musical genres. Elena Gilliam, she is a real jazz legend. Why are we shooting it sideways? Why don't you go over here this way? I said, why don't you come around here, so you got...
It's sideways. Cover my face.
Okay, our final honoree is Sherri Pruitt. Sherri is known as a unique and powerful song stylist, an entertainer, and a songwriter. Sherri's musical and performance inspiration comes from Mahalia Jackson, Coco Taylor, Aretha Franklin, Diana Washington, Gladys Knight, and many more. In 1974, she moved to California to pursue her career and take vocal coaching from Ronnie Housley and the Evangeline Stewart. She has played many theaters from New York to L.A., has done sessions with Cold Six Records, M5 Media, and is presently working with Future Tech Records. She is also collaborating with the Third Degree Blues Band, Blues Band, and the Sherri Pruitt Blues Project Band, and the All-Stars Blues Band. She is a real jazz legend. Thank you. Members, that concludes this presentation, but I would like, I would like to give... We want to, you know, the jazz, these jazz lessons are a real labor of love for Linda. She works hard on it, has been a strong promoter of the, not just the genre, but those individuals who've been so responsible for it. I'd like to give her a chance to say a few words at this time. Linda Morgan.
Thank you, Colonel. Good morning. My name is Linda Morgan. As Councilman said, I am the founder of the Living Legend Foundation, and to date, I have, we have honored one hundred jazz and blues legends here in California. We do have a few other ones that have come out to support today. Al Williams, Leroy Music Harrison, Billy Mitchell, Dalili Pearson, Eloise Lawes, Billy Mitchell are all here to support in the, the work that we've been doing here in, in L.A. We thank you for allowing us to have this presentation during African-American Appreciation Month.
Madam President, that's item eight, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, item eight, sir?
at Hollywood Dems. Again, we have a black victim, Deantro LaJohn Gant Jr. June, that's how long it took them to come up with the reward, fifty thousand dollars for the arrest of whoever murdered Deantro LaJohn Gant. I will add three million dollars to the reward, and I'm not afraid of having to, for someone collecting, because as we know, you haven't had a black person murdered in this city with a reward on his or her head that you collected, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker is Wayne Spiller, item eight.
The pig will address the council.
Yes, I do not like these fucking awards. I've been watching Joe Buscagno for years, and all of these reserve officers, including the Englander, they do not go out...
You're not speaking on the item, Mr. Spiller.
They should go out and find the killers. Why are they here? Get out, take a radio, and find the killers. Why do we need a reward? We need more police officers looking for killers. Take them off of patrol duty, find the killers with the cops. Why are these sergeants here? They could be out looking for the killer. Instead, you're relying on the snitches who get stitches, who become police bitches. Do not trust the LAPD. Vote no on this item. And finally, to quote Little Bozzy, fuck the police.
Next speaker, Juan Alcala, item eight.
We need a reward. Find out who killed all the American Indians, and drove away the Mexicans and took away their land.
This speaker is not on topic.
Mr. Alcala, you're not speaking on the, on the item.
Oh, 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 no, this is a reward much smaller in size for somebody that killed somebody over there in the beautiful city of L.A., where nothing bad ever happens. Right, city attorney? How much would you pay if, if the guy that had been killed was a blondie named Custer, the bastard? I don't know, that, that happened in a different dimension, in a different time, and it doesn't even apply to right now. Now, we gotta, we gotta talk about what's happening right now. This whole city is a piece of shit.
You're not talking about, you're not on the, on the subject.
Yeah, because there's crime. There's crime, there's trash all over the place. I'm talking about that.
The speaker is not on the, you're not on the topic.
A reward, a reward offer for, for the people that go around doing bad things. Why don't we offer a reward for City Hall? And, I was just given another parking violation.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala, you're not on the subject. Thank you, sir. That concludes Cards on item eight. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, item number nine.
Item nine, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, at J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This sounds like nothing. Vacation, to vacate a portion of the alley west of Figaroa Street between Florence Avenue and Seventy-third. What does that mean? Somebody asked for it to be vacated. In other words, somebody said, that's city property, I'm a developer, I want the property, I'm gonna give all fifteen of you money into your office holders' accounts, and in exchange for that, I want you to give me this property. None of these scumbags up here, all fifteen of them, will say anything. I'm asking you to tell me why you are vacating the property, who, and who you're giving it to. Other cities do it, but this city does it out of control. Alley vacation. Remember, this property is worth millions of dollars, these properties, and instead of fixing your streets, especially in the black and Hispanic areas, they're handing, giving this property away to who? To wealthy, white, and Chinese investors. If you're black, stay back. If you're brown, you can stay around. But if you're white or, or yellow, this city belongs to you. And blacks, get the hell out of this city. Get the hell out of the Oscars. Get the hell out. We're gonna take over your whole neighborhood, tear it down, and move in rich Asians. That's the plot. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Walsh, you need to say the, the item, sir. Wayne Spiller on item number nine.
Yes, the puppet pig does not know that much about this item, but I'll speak on this item. This is this fucking bullshit that you have called developer payoffs. And I'm really surprised that this isn't CD VIII. I thought, I thought we changed the direction of CD VIII. I thought it's a new place. I thought it was like CD IV, like David, woo! I thought Marquisie was gonna be like that. I thought this was gonna stop. But the same shit's going on in CD VIII.
The speaker is not on the item.
And we have to get this stopped. Who the fuck is getting this?
Mr. Spiller, you're not on the, you're not speaking on the item.
And why are they getting this? So, please, Marquisie, vote no on this. This is an absolute payoff.
Next speaker, Mr. Alcala.
Instead of giving that, all those payoffs to the developers, what you should do is give that money to the homeless, because they need a vacation from you assholes. This kind of vacation you're talking about, it's all about money. And the previous speakers were absolutely right. All you're interested is in money, 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 money for City Hall. What makes you think that you deserve the money?
You're not speaking on the, on the...
On the vacation, yeah. I'm talking about that damn vacation that you guys are gonna take with the money the developers are gonna give you. Yeah, that's the vacation you're gonna get. I think you need a ticket to ride, so you invent a vacation of city streets and give them to the rich developers, because there is money to be made for City Hall employees. You bunch of crooked cockroaches.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala, you're not speaking on the subject. That concludes Cards on number nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's, let's go to number two for reconsideration.
Very good, Madam President, that would be item two, to be reconsidered for twelve members.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration on item number two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That matter is now before you.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Very well, we can, let's move on to item number ten.
Item ten, called Special for Cards.
Wayne Spiller, item number ten.
This is again, another situation where police need to go do the killing and the taking of the killer. First of all, fifty thousand dollars for what? For a fucking snitch? For a fucking snitch? That is not enough money. I hear a lot of things about the snitches that get these stitches or these rewards. Do not trust the police. Do not take the money, especially from these people. Now, we need to get Officer Buscagno and Officer Englander off their fucking chairs and into the community to find the killer. They know who the killer is.
You're not speaking on the item, sir. Get back on the item. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Go find him now.
That's it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spindler. Next speaker is John Walsh on item number ten.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. Again, another six months reward offer, and six months after that. If you said to me, "I could live until you caught Jamal Schwartz's murder," I would, I would accept it because I would live forever. You damn well know that this man was murdered in a gang thing. You collaborate with the gangs. You are on their side. Snitches get stitches. I want you to produce one black person in this city who will get up and say, "If I had information about this murder, I would give it to you, and I would, I would feel that you would protect me." Every black person in this state knows if they, and a lot of them have information, forty or fifty, if they give you information, they will be murdered. And then you'll have another reward. And if somebody does that and shot Schwartz's killer, it's on and on and on. This is a charade. It's bullshit. You know, and I want someone to get up here and tell me how many rewards you have given out to gang killers for arresting and prosecuting a gang killer in the past ten years. And I'll tell you what it is. Zero. Zero is the number. And still you play this little game because you're, you're on your knees sucking off the gangs, all fifteen of you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. The next speaker is Juan Alcala. Mr. Alcala, you have one minute left.
I know.
And please stick to the item, please.
More than enough time to offer a reward for the, for the hairpiece worn by Donald Trump. I'm offering a fifty thousand dollar reward whoever gets the, the hairpiece that Donald Trump wears.
You're not on the subject, sir. Thank you.
Oh, no, no, the subject is a reward for another snitches get stitches kind of situation where nobody is going to come forward to claim anything because they're more afraid of the police than they're afraid of other community members. The biggest gang is the police. We all know that. As Mr. Lee Baca, who's headed over to jail.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. You're done. You're not on the subject. Thank you. That concludes cards on item number ten. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That item passes. Mr. Clerk, let's move on to our special meeting.
Very good, Madam President. Blumenfeld, Bonnebois, Sciano, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Harrington, Stossen, Wizer, Kresker, Corian, Martinez, Oferell, Price, Rue, Wesson, twelve members present. Item twelve is an item for which a public hearing has been held. There is an amending motion. That's item twelve A. It has been circulated, and it's now before counsel for its consideration.
Okay, without objection, that item's before us. Are there any cards on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Previn, item twelve, sir.
It's Eric Previn from CD two. Good morning, counsel. What is the amending motion? City Attorney?
The amending motion is posted.
Posted where, sir?
On the board.
Would you defer, let me look at it? Is it substantial?
We're going to take public comment, yes.
But, okay, so I'm going to be speaking in the dark as to the amendment?
Please continue, Mr. Previn. The amendment's been posted, so.
Okay, so we'll go through the motion. Okay. So this is a, sort of the issue of our time. This has to deal with affordable housing and the Housing Authority and such, and this is involving a number of pipeline projects. One in particular, we are going to be, called the King 1101 project. We're going to be asking for, or providing $2.18 million in additional tax credits. These are, these are a number of projects, all in this item together, that were passed up north to get additional funding, and they did not make it. There's a lot of competition for these projects. This is, this is difficult work to qualify because there's a lot of competition statewide. I think these are probably worthy projects. The other one called Path Metro Villas One is also seeking an additional, I think, nine percent tax credit. And they're being recommended by our group to be gussied up for better consideration next time. These were both approved in the 2015. You know, I would applaud the board on these, the, the, the council, rather, on this effort. This is a difficult task. But it speaks a little bit to how mired we are because all in, I believe, this touches on approximately 400 units for affordable and low-cost housing. Why would that be? Sixty seconds. Was that an error?
Thank you, sir. You're done on item twelve.
That was sixty seconds?
We have, we have no more cards on this item, Mr. Clerk. That was two minutes.
No more cards, ma'am.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
There's, there's an urgent forthwith on this item, so we need to vote on that as well. So urgent forthwith on item number twelve. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Madam President, would you like to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yeah, let's adjourn the special meeting and return to our regular meeting.
Very, very good. That brings us to item number one, called special for cards. Madam President, before doing so, there have been requests to continue items one AJ, B, D, H, Q, AB, and AG to March 29, as well as requests to continue items one V, A, C, N, O, AE, and AA to March 18.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Let's move on to cards. Mr. Walsh on item one.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. And these again are the protests and appeals for the liens. Property, property owners have liens because they didn't pay their taxes. You're doing a good job here. Remember, when you do a good job, I am the first to repeatedly congratulate you. When you do a terrible job, I am the first to excoriate you. On this issue, on hearing protest, on building and safety, you're doing excellent work. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Previn. On item one. Mr. Alcala, can you please find your seat?
Oh, I dropped my visitor's pass. I'm just picking it up. I don't want to get arrested.
The sergeant will show you to your seat, sir. Mr. Previn, can you please come up?
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD two. And for the record, the, there's an additional $2.050 million from that last item that was added and will be apparently reimbursed, but it doesn't say by whom. And it is for a completely different project. So I think that you're improper on that, City Attorney. Item number one is the lien item, as we know. And someone said at one point that they were concerned because a number of the fines and penalties are identical. So that, for example, in today's agenda, there are, I believe, there's about six items that each have a penalty of $1,288.56. And so that might be because they all had the same violation, and it was exactly the same amount of time, so that would make sense. But I actually checked, and it's not even remotely like that. It is wildly divergent cases that all have arrived at the exact same price. One in Mr. Englander's district, CD 12, where there was someone being penalized for having open storage on their property and trash around, which obviously, in 2011. Another one where you have a graffiti, a building which had some graffiti on it, and was tagged in, again, a different year. And yet they've arrived at these exact same penalties. So I think that we have to do a little bit of an investigation as to what might be fraudulent conduct. This is obviously a group that has been accused of that with great regularity building and safety because people come down here and caffect one after another as to how is it possible, since it's been resolved. In one that I looked at, it actually said right on the, the document that substantiates what the claim was, "Close file 2011." So, I mean, I don't know why any of you would put your names on this stuff. I think we need to find a system in 2016 that is comprehensive and understandable and not onerous and punitive towards residents.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, item number one.
Back in the hood on item one with a hood. So, now, try to speak on fucking special items, and you have to go back to bullshit. So that's all right. Now we have liens, CD eight, one B, CD eight, one D, CD eight, one I, CD eight, one Q. All of these items must be forgiven. One AB, CD eight. One AG, CD eight. They must be forgiven because it's Black History Month. All Negroes and all people of the colored persuasion must be given amnesty on their liens for the month of February. That's the deal that was made. That is the sacred creed that was made. And that's why the Reverend Sharpton will be here for the Oscars on Sunday and Saturday.
You're not speaking on that issue.
And he will come and talk about liens as one issue of many because liens take away homes from black people and put them on the streets. Liens are the devil. Liens are evil. Liens are oppression. Liens are what caused slavery in the 21st century. We have to get rid of fucking liens in CD eight, CD nine. We would do it in CD 10, but it's ran by an Uncle Tom, so we have to go to eight and nine and Black History Month.
You're not speaking on the subject.
Get rid of the liens.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. You're done. Next speaker is Juan Alcala. You're done. Mr. Alcala, item number one.
They go clean. All these liens are illegal and immoral, and you guys are the damn crooks that should be leaned upon.
You're out of time. Yvonne Michelle Autry, item one. Mr. Alcala, I'm going to have you remove your Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Well, you know, I still find that there seem to be double standards. And the fact that there have been no black nominations really, for me, personifies the type of white society that you
You are not speaking on the topic. This is item number one.
I'm about to. I still, you know, having a history of, of land, of real estate owners in my family dealing with liens and dealing with assessment of property taxes, it still appears to me as if black people and people of color economically challenge people. But especially, I would say, black people are inordinately, are predisposed to even a greater taxation than the middle-class, you know, mainstream white constituency, especially, of course, the Jewish people.
This is still not on the topic.
And now even the new Jewish people, who are the Hispanic people.
No, you're not speaking on the topic, ma'am.
Well, no, I think that there is a real dichotomy, and that needs to be exposed. As you know, there is a real nigger tax, yeah, where black people are still taxed more so than white people.
Thank you, you're done. You're not speaking on the topic. Thank you very much.
It is. It's just something you don't want on the record.
That is, that concludes cards for this item.
Can't tell me to sit down, bitch.
Mr. Clerk? It's okay. Sit down.
The speaker is disrupting the meeting system.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Let's move on to public comment.
Madam Speaker.
Mr. Blumenfeld?
I'm sorry. On one AC, I'd like to ask that the late fee be waived. One, item one AC.
Okay, we just voted on this item, so.
We'd have to reconsider that matter, Madam President.
With your indulgence, I'd like to ask for reconsideration.
Sure, let's reconsider item one.
One AC, yeah.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, that was on reconsideration. Now the item's before us. Mr. Blumenfeld?
On item number one AC, I'd like to waive the late fee. Five oh four? Five hundred and four. Five hundred and four.
And that would be five hundred and four dollars.
Okay, that item's before us now. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, very well. Thank you. Let's now move on to public comment. First speaker is Irma Gibson. Are you here?
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
I'm coming before you on behalf of the young people in our youth ambassador program. I believe I was here in August, and I presented the young people to you all and explained to you the program that they were involved in and the amount of support that they would be needing. And I saw all these agreeable faces and nods to let, let me know what we can, what you can do for us. So I'm here today. I have packets that I'm going to have handed out to each and every one of you, explaining our program thoroughly. Our young people will be going to Washington, D.C. next month for a week with Up Close, a program where they will be competing with other students from all the countries, all the high schools throughout the city. And I would like them to go representative. And I would like them to go representative with your support in any way possible. I have passed out packets and I hope that you look at them and take them into serious consideration. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Will do. Thank you very much for coming. The next speaker is John Walsh, followed by Eric Previn and Wayne Spindler.
John Walsh tweeting at HollywoodDems or at J. Walsh Confidential. It's important to understand, Sunday afternoon, we are going to have the largest demonstration in the history of Hollywood led by the Reverend Al Sharpton. Please show up at 2:00 PM in front of the Hollywood High School. That's one block south of where the Oscar's going to be. It's at Highland and Sunset. When the crowd gathers, there'll be 15,000 or 20,000, and then, when we are told, we will descend on the Oscar cast, where the mayor and all of you will be inside, being protected by white cops and white-spirited cops. Remember, 2:00 PM this Sunday in front of Hollywood High at Sunset and Highland Avenue.
Next speaker, Mr. Previn, followed by Wayne Spindler.
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD2. And the jig is up, Mr. Wesson. There's going to be no more violating public speakers in this hall. And the City Attorney, Mike Fuer, who is currently running for office again, I guess, needs to step forward. I have spoken with the District Attorney. This behavior is, A, unsupportable, but, B, it erodes the basic feeling that the people who have elected all of you are being handled even close to appropriately. And I realize that you've done everything in your power to whip up a kind of confusion as to what's really happening in this room, but it's clear, and it is over. It is over. The four officers who frogmarched me out the other day need to provide their numbers today so that when I do meet with Chief Beck about instructing cops to break people's rights right in front of them and others on a regular basis, that will be brought to an end, okay? So it's over. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, followed by Juan Alcala.
So, when it comes Sunday, the revolution begins on Sunday with the racist fucking Oscars that starts. Those with hoods, those without hoods, will come together to declare that you have a fucking award. Not one person other than white was nominated. Not one! You watch the movie Creed, the black man was not even fucking nominated. How is that possible? Because LA is an apartheid city. This fucking place is ran by apartheid. And now at 2 o'clock, come, join the Reverend Sharpton, lead the march, go into the Oscars, take over, 1964-style, take this fucking city back from these motherfucking races.
Nick, can you please be quiet, ma'am?
The audience members are disrupting the meeting.
I'm going to have you removed, ma'am. I need you to be quiet. The next speaker is Juan Alcala.
I've been patiently waiting, and Mr. Spindler, he's completely right. This city is overtaken by white supremacist pigs that go around giving parking violations. Who the hell ever voted for a parking, for a parking law? The city has just taken it upon itself to violate the people over and over and over, every day. Who the fuck gave government the authority to take more and more money from people that barely have any money? What the hell is wrong with you fucking Nazis? Why? Why? Why are you doing this to people? Koritz, go back to over there, you know? They kick your ass out of Germany. You know what I mean?
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. Next speaker, next speaker, Michelle, Ivan Michel Autry?
Yeah, I love my colleagues and they speak off-item all the time, but I realize you're ingrained with that mentality where you will never tell a white male to sit down, but a black woman you will. Maybe you had a flashback to your chola mama days. You know, again, this is, this is America. My people built this country, not yours. I don't have any racist problems, you know, with Latinos or Latinas, but people like you, I do. You don't have a right to tell me to sit down. You've never said that to Wayne Spindler because he's a white male. Yeah, and that's deeply ingrained in your mentality. But first of all, what I'd like to say is that for those that have engineered this society, namely the Zionist Jewish people, Mormons, those that have the money, again, I'm not going to accept my reparations in the form of homelessness. You say that we have too much, so you come and take it, damaging everything that we have. And these are Jewish people hiring a Mexican maintenance man to put holes in my clothes. I'm not going to be in the streets so vampires, cannibals, pedophiles, pimps can exploit me. So...
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Have a great weekend. Thank you very much. That concludes public comments. Members, are there any, are there any announcements? Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you. The LA Waterfront is on the move, colleagues, and this Saturday, LA's newest and greenest brewery is opening. Brewery West, Mr. Weezer, amazing craft beer. We'll head down one of these days, head down there. Brewery West at Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles this Saturday. I was just telling Mr. Bonn and Mr. Blumenfeld, amazing coverage from the LA Times, LA Weekly. It will be opening on Saturday from noon to 9:00 PM. Food trucks, entertainment from our local San Pedro bands, 110 East 22nd Street Warehouse 9 at Crafted. Everyone is welcome. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other announcements? Mr. Blumenfeld? Mr. Rue? Mr. Price? Mr. Clerk, let's post and refer all the motions. Okay, any adjourned motions, can we please rise? Mr. Koritz?
Thank you, Madam President. In January, we lost Jean Cordova to cancer, and she was a great champion for LGBT rights and causes. She attended high school in La Puente and then entered the Immaculate Heart of Mary convent. She went on to get her bachelor's degree in social welfare from UCLA and her master's in social work from UCLA. She was a leader in many ways in the LGBT community. She founded and published The Lesbian Tide. She started the gay and lesbian community Yellow Pages, which was very significant, especially back in the day. She was the LA Chapter President of the Daughters of Billatus and originated the first national lesbian conference, which took place at UCLA in the 70s, as well as a number of other key conferences. She was the Human Rights Editor of the Los Angeles Free Press way back when. She was the Southern California Media Director of the campaign in 1978 to beat the anti-gay Briggs Initiative Proposition 6, which is where I first met her, and served in the same role in the Stop 64 effort to beat the LaRouche AIDS quarantine ballot measure. She was also president of the Stonewall Democratic Club and helped start the Democratic Party's Gay and Lesbian Caucus. Those are just some of her many accomplishments, which also include serving as president of one national gay and lesbian archives. She wrote an award-winning book entitled, When We Were Outlaws: A Memoir of Love and Revolution. She went to Mexico and lived there for eight years, during which time she and her life partner Lynn Harris Allen co-founded a nonprofit organization for economic justice. She was an amazing, inspiring, courageous, and productive person in her 67 years, and she is survived by her partner Lynn Harris Allen, and she'll be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Koritz. Any other adjourned motions on my right? On my left, Mr. Blumenfeld?
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of an incredible man who was a pioneering inventor, engineer, investor, philanthropist. His name is Al Mann or Alfred Mann. He was born in Portland, Oregon in 1925. His father was a grocer who immigrated from England, his mother was a singer and a pianist who immigrated from Poland. He served in the Army Corps during World War II, then settled Southern California where he earned a physics degree from UCLA. He was an amazing person. He founded 17 different companies in fields ranging from aerospace to pharmaceuticals to medical devices. All these companies were based in the San Fernando Valley and Santa Clarita Valleys. His inventions touched the lives of so many people. Some of the remarkable breakthroughs under his watch included the first rechargeable pacemaker, an inhalable form of insulin, an artificial retina that allowed blind people to see, cochlear implant. I first met him back in the 90s. He came, I was working for Congressman Berman in Washington, and he was this passionate guy about a pacemaker. We needed to change the federal law because he had basically reinvented what could be done with, with some of these medical devices. And in doing that, his passion was so clear about how he wanted to help millions of people, and that really is what he did with his life, hundreds of millions of people, when you, when you think about all of his inventions and businesses. He's not only a leader in business, he was a philanthropist. He founded and endowed the Al Mann Foundation, a nonprofit research organization devoted to the development of advanced medical products in a variety of fields. He also established the Al Mann Institute for Biomedical Engineering at USC as a nonprofit organization to bridge the gap between biomedical invention and the creation of commercially successful medical projects, products to improve lives. Throughout his 90 years, he was someone who made a major impact in ways that touch all of our lives, but we don't see it every day. And those who, who directly benefit from some of those products have had just quantum leaps, being able to see when they couldn't see, being able to hear when they couldn't hear, being able to live when they wouldn't have a heart. So with that, I ask that we adjourn in his memory. Thank you. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing that, Mr. Clerk, can you please schedule all of today's Rule 16 motions for Tuesday, March 1st? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.